All right, if y'all ready, we'll go ahead and get started.
Strong, Mr. Paris. Lord, we thank you for the minute blessings that you did live in this great county. And yes, we thank you for the challenges that we're presented with sometimes and the strength that you give us to overcome a number of challenges. We ask that you guide us as we go through making decisions affecting the citizens of the county in your lay of prayer. Amen.
Amen. I pray to thee, to the fires of the United States of America, and to the Republic where this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would make a motion that the agenda be approved with a couple of additions here. That we add the swimming pool and also the HVAC bids under our unfinished business. Anybody have any other changes?
I do not.
Okay, I'll make that in form of a motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, does anybody have any corrections to the minutes of the June 8th work session, the June 8th executive session, the June 9th regular meeting, or the June 22nd special call meeting minutes?
I'll make a move that be approved as written.
Okay, second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sandy, you want to give us a financial statement, please?
This is the financial report for June 30th. Each department should be at 50 percent of their expenditure budget used. Departments over budget as of June 30th are the Tax Assessor's Office at 51 percent, the airport is at 72 percent, and E-999 is at 53 percent. Overall, we are at 36 percent of the total revenue budget received and 40 percent of the total expenditure budget used. Total revenue received to date, $12,420,548. Total expenditures to date, $13,838,299.
Okay, any questions?
On the airport, you expect that to level out by year end?
I do. We will make some adjustments on that when we do some budget amendments because they have gotten some grant funds to cover a couple of projects that they've had to do on their ground maintenance, so that should take care of those.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy.
Thank you.
Okay, under unfinished business, first item would be the swimming pool. Steven, can you give us a report of where we stand on the engineering and the prospects of putting it out to bid?
Evening, Board Commissioners. Yes, as of June 30th, we've received all engineering's pack from the Company of Texas. We are on board for everything being sent over to... It was sent to David earlier this week. See process is that we can go forward. Everything is finished as far as prepared.
Okay. Did we ever decide whether or not we'd already approved putting it out to bid?
What was shared with me earlier today, I don't think so, so let's go ahead and have y'all take that.
Just as a precaution, Lord, I make a motion that we put this out to bid.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And the HVAC bids. I think we may need to talk about those a bit. How much do we want to end this?
I do know that there was some additional work that was done this morning with respect to the Bureau of References, which is expected and customary and prior to the awards of bid. One of the bids has some peculiar language in it that I believe the Board needs to be aware of. I don't know if y'all looked closely at it, but it's the Green Lead Mechanical Systems, the one that you received from them. And there in the second part, in the first sentence there is, "Please note, the equipment selected can be replaced as a 30-week lead time from the time it is ordered." Now here's the concern that I have for the county. Prepayment from the county may be needed to keep current pricing of equipment. No, that, okay, I think.
Given the way that prices are increasing, I would not want to do the prepay, and I would also not want to risk prices going up. I'd rather take a firm price than might be a little higher.
Yeah, I just don't think that the bid as submitted conforms with what y'all had asked for. I think y'all had asked for a hard bid, and I think that's got an adjustable clause in there. And again, I'd be very concerned about the county prepay for anything and not having the equipment on hand. That's my concern.
I wasn't sure if that, if they were referring to just the equipment for that or the whole amount, so I'm fine with either.
Okay. All right. Would someone like to make a motion to approve one of those?
The bids were close, but I think we need to go with the one that doesn't have prepayments involved. Sorry, can we go with QT Contracting, which is doing businesses, Powers Heating and Air, for a bid of $785,777.77?
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we're good to move forward on them?
Yes, so Eric notified the bidder that they've been successful and will begin to put everything together.
All right. Discussion of possible actual approval of revisions to the waste pro contract. I think based on what was said the other day, we maybe need to hold off on that bid. Are we good together?
I need to get all the changes, and then I need to see that they will approve for those changes as well. But the bigger thing is, is that that base price won't be able to be established until July 30th, and I think we probably need to have that in the form of a hard number. So it'd be my recommendation that y'all either adopt this agenda item at a later special call or at the regular August meeting.
So I would make a motion that be tabled for now.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion of possible actual contract amendment on the overall cut road. I know, Jim, we talked about whether or not to hold off on that, and initially I was in favor of that till I found out how long we were talking about. At this point, my thing, my favorite move would be we need to go ahead with it. But I heard the Board Commissioners, you wanted to make more of a discussion of the inspection. Inspection. I agree. Thank you.
Expecting property.
Currently, for the event being out there, at least being 18 feet, with the subdivision will have to be 20 feet. Question was whether or not just wait and do it on 20 feet. And I've kind of talked about maybe quite a long time before that cut around, so my feeling is we go ahead and do the 18 feet with the over 20 and a half, and so that's just me. Carlene, the... We've had developments in the last couple of days that changed a little bit, but, and I know we didn't have the opportunity to take a look at it this afternoon, but it's good either way. If we're going to proceed, then what I would need is an authorization by the Board of Commissioners to amend the contract that you all authorized during my medical absence from $18,000 to the $32,000, whatever it is there. And then I would present, I would present that to the developer.
But this is not money the county is paying?
No, this would be money that they would...
Right, so when we increase, we're not talking to the county?
Right. The only reason that they were not able to find the paper, or they, that was the excuse. So we found the paper, and... I'd make a motion to approve the changes to the contract. Can you go forward with it? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Kim, I'll... Discussion of possible actual contract amendments, and to venue taking con... Yes, sir. We talked about this yesterday in the work session. I got word today from the developer's representatives that I can pick up a check and the developer's execution of the amended contract where he is the contractor. And then we've got two invoices that Sandy is hoping for the paving that she will be able to disperse, and that project will be finished. Okay, so what you need from us is a motion to amend the contract, right? So...
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have some zoning requests by Lindsey Miller.
From residential obesity to R2 residential high density.
This is to split property bill, eight homes. Personally, I'm okay with it.
I thought we talked about reducing the number of driveways.
We did, yeah, that was one, going to be the stipulation. Jim, did y'all look at that today, reducing the number of driveways at the vineyards? Robert's Ridge. Robert's Ridge. We actually looked at it yesterday, Mr. Chairman, and the concept plan that the developer has presented shows eight lots. And my recommendation is that we limit the number of driveway entrances. It works out very well, and I will yield to Karen, that four driveways, one between lots, one and two, three and four, five and six, and seven and eight, and there'd be joint driveway agreements between those lots, whoever the owners are. And that cuts the number of driveway cuts from eight to four. And that would be my recommendation.
Jim, how far back does the single driveway extend?
How far back?
Yes, from where it cuts, where it intersects with the road. How far back before it branches into two driveways?
That, you know, it depends on the... The lots are not unionized, they could end up...
I guess my question is, from a regulation standpoint, you don't want it to separate it into two driveways until it gets past your roadway, right?
Right.
Okay.
Right, right. Well, then I would make a motion that it be approved with the stipulation that there's a maximum of four driveways.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Nicole Chubal and Edward Phillips, from R1 Residential O density to A1 Agricultural. This would be to have a hobby farm and a residence. Personally, I'm okay with it. And motion to approve it?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Walnut Grove LLC from A1 Agricultural to A1 Agricultural with conditional use. This would be for a wedding and events venue. They have about, I believe, 130 acres, and they're looking to put it pretty much in the middle of it. On that basis, I'm okay with it. Then I make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Jurgen Welsh, R2 residential high density to R2 residential high density with conditional use. This is to build a primary home and a guest home. Personally, I'm okay with it. Would make a motion that it be approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Which brings us to citizens wishing to speak. Anybody that would like to speak on any topic. Now, I do want to ask before we get started, how many folks are here because they would like to speak on the river licensing? Okay.
Want to do them first?
No, no, not necessarily. I just want to say that, of course, everybody's got 10 minutes. The best use of that would be if somebody's already said it, not necessarily to waste your time saying it again, but it'll be your 10 minutes. If you're not here to speak on that, go ahead, and then I have a little preface I want to do for them.
My name is Susan Smith, and I'd just like to bring three key items. I'll try to be as brief as possible. I've also written a lot of the more details out that I'll give to you to pass on to the rest to consider. The first one, I'd like to ask that the Board Commissioners and our county officials just consider potentially revising the rules for large subdivisions moving forward. Currently, our subdivisions that have multiple phases are only held to the ordinances that were in place at the time the developer submits their application, even when the completion of all phases might take multiple years and in many cases do. This is just not good policy because it leads to inconsistent infrastructure requirements across the county, all depending solely on when the developer submitted that initial application. And it's particularly bad when it's a very large subdivision and it takes many years to complete, and we do have that situation in certain circumstances. So a couple specific things I'd just like to suggest that I think will be in the interest of everyone, the buyers, our community at large who already lives here, and the county in terms of their anticipated tax revenues. First is, I think every subdivision phase should be required to be complete prior to the developer being able to proceed to the next phase. And complete should really mean, if the developer, for whatever reason, is unable or unwilling to proceed to the next phase, all of the buyers for the phase with a lot worth paying would have all of the elements necessary for them to form an owner-run HOA, all the promised utilities, road completion, or whatever other amenities were advertised at the time of the sale. And then each phase of a multi-phase, multi-year development should have to adhere to the ordinances that were in place at the time that phase began, not at the time the initial subdivision application was submitted. This is going to help us ensure that the infrastructure requirements, as we continue to evolve those throughout the county, end up being more consistently applied and far less arbitrary just based on that application dated at the very front end of these large subdivisions. And then every subdivision lot that's offered for sale really ought to include a contract provision entitling the buyer to a full refund of all money paid if a lot's found to be unbuildable due to a failed perk test. I'm going to skip some of this in the interest of time, but it's a very standard contract provision with most reputable real estate sales groups, but we're not seeing that being followed by all, and I think that would go a long way to protecting buyers in all cases and making sure that the subdivisions are set up to succeed. Every subdivision lot offered for sale should also include a map showing all of the expected phases of the development, not just the current phase that's being offered for sale. Buyers should be made aware of the true anticipated size of that subdivision that they're ultimately going to be responsible for managing once that HOA is turned over from the developer to the owners. A lot of the developers just aren't doing that, and people are getting kind of shocked by it and may have, you know, seriously influenced whether they would have purchased, and then in turn, you know, we end up with sort of a mess on our hands across the county. So that's the first point I wanted to touch on. And then I have another document, I won't go into the details, but I'm just going to ask that you guys consider revising the table of allowed activities by zoning type to allow for greater overlap between A1 and R1. I think it's great progress that the counties made, that you guys have made in compiling that table. You know, I've seen the, I mean, it's a lot of progress, it's hard to do, the language has to be very careful, but I think it would still be appropriate to make some further tweaks because we now have five levels of residential zoning that's defined, and a significant number of R1 properties all over the county are large, they're not in subdivisions with HOAs or other covenants and restrictions, and they're surrounded usually by both residential and agricultural properties, and we get a lot of tension between which one should really prevail in these situations. I think it's important to allow greater freedom for the R1 landowners, at least the larger landowners, and that's some of my suggestions, maybe look at certain size of R1 properties to allow some more freedom, because I think we need to take some steps to overtly preserve the rural character of our county. I mean, that's presumably a goal that we're all interested in, we all support, and it's certainly what attracts people to this region. And so I've attached, you know, just a series of things along the lines of the items on that table that, you know, you might reconsider to make a tweak a little bit. So the third thing I want to touch on, and I really don't want to get into all the details here, especially in the interest of time, but we, and Mr. Paris, you know, you and I have spoken about this, we have some issues with some data that need to be compiled based on a joint comprehensive plan that hasn't been compiled to date. So let me just, before reading all of the implications of that, is that still the case? Have we made any progress in closing that gap at this point?
That's still the case.
Okay. I'm going to give this to you in writing that outlines the legal liabilities. I think they're very serious. I don't want to get into all of that here, but I want you to read it, I want you to talk with the county attorney about it, but most importantly, I want to volunteer my services to help fix it. If you guys want it, I'd be ready tomorrow morning to show up and start that work. I know you're not, but I definitely want to focus...
Well, actually, we might be.
I'm sorry?
Actually, we might be.
Well...
See, my problem is, when you talk about the data that we need to collect, I don't know what data you're talking about.
Well, I can definitely help, I'll do it for free, and I'm a professional in data analytics, so I would be happy to get us on the right path.
Let's have a discussion offline.
Okay, okay. So these documents just kind of cover all the things I talked about in some detail as well? I have three copies.
Thank you.
I have a question for you. What is your background or what's your...
I've worked in data analytics most of my career, about 16 years at IBM and ever since, but heavy in data analytics.
And did you do any planning or any...
No, but I've applied in almost every industry cross-the-board. I have 28 patents in data analytics techniques, so I'd be the person to do it.
Okay, I appreciate the time you've put into this.
Sure.
Well, we've got, we've got three copies, I see.
The other sheets, other pamphlets right there on there.
Oh, there.
There you go.
You got your, okay, y'all are good.
Y'all should need to have two, stay true.
Thank you, Susan. Okay. Now, before we continue, based on the emails that I've been getting all day today, I suspect that you've all been told that I'm ready and wanting to shut down all the river outfitting and river activities. So let me tell you what my position actually is on that. For seven and a half years at this point, I have fought the battle of trying to get everything, all the outfitters to obey the rules and to make sure that your customers obey the rules out there. There are individual residences there, and they have the right to be able to come and go without being harassed and without being, having their way blocked. We went to considerable effort out there. We totally revamped that takeout site. We marked parking areas, and we marked the areas where there's no parking in front of the residential areas there. And it's okay when you're turning around and driving out to drive through there, but you don't park in those areas. Neither do you have 150 people standing in those areas where the homeowners can't get through, and then when they do try to get through, having them harass these homeowners and making the obscene gestures and the things that we're seeing out there. We put in, we cleared that entire area back there. We took down trees, we cleared it all out. We put big signs up that said, "Wait behind these signs for your ride," and it was all being ignored. What I said yesterday, and what I'm going to say again today, is that I am tired of fighting the fight, and I don't plan to anymore. It's as simple as this: obey the rules, make sure your customers obey the rules, nobody's going to stop anything. Continue to ignore the rules, continue to have us have to fight this battle, and I'll be moving, first of all, to suspend license. If that doesn't make an impression, I'll be moving to revoke the license. I am not going to fight this fight anymore. So all they got, and it's not what you're hearing, I don't want it shut down. I want people to be able to come to Gilmer County and have a good time. I do not want somebody coming to Gilmer County and finding the door closed. I don't want people saying, "I'd like to go to Gilmer County," but they don't do it anymore. That's the last thing in the world I want. But I can't emphasize enough that it's not on me. It's on your river outfitters. All they've got to do is obey the rules, make sure their people obey the rules, and that their customers obey the rules. Nobody will ever hear another word from Charlie. So that's, that's the situation, that's where I'm coming from. So now, I welcome any comments you want to make.
Well, someone's coming up, Charlie. I'll just say that we reiterate what you said, that we've really fought to have our outfitters. We want responsible outfitters there on the river, but they have to be responsible, and we do have homeowners there. I know that Shaiun actually reached out to me with the L.J. River Outfitters today and said, "I'm trying, I'm following all the rules, what are we, you know, what else can I do to do?" So I said, "Just make sure your people and your vehicles stay out of that line," and I do believe there was some filming done out at her place, and what I saw in every area was, was pretty responsible, and I appreciate the effort that L.J. River Outfitters has made to, to follow the rules, the guidelines that were set up, so...
And I've seen that, but I would say too, though, that just make sure your people are respectful to the residents there. You know, if, if I get a video where they're cussing one of them, it's not good, so...
Go ahead. How are you guys? I'm here to address the river, obviously. My name is Fred Janson, and I'm here to address yesterday's meeting of possibly suspending the river business licenses. I run Carticare River with my dad. The initial question is why there's always a threat to end the river outfitting businesses. Carticare River has accepted all changes that the county has requested of us. We make every effort to accommodate customers' personal items and at the takeout locations. Carticare pays an employee to wait there every weekend and direct people getting... Cardi Care pays an employee to wait there every weekend and direct people getting off the river, getting on the river, make sure we don't block any parking spaces, make sure we don't block homeowners' driveways. Cardi Care River makes every effort to ensure that the residents at the takeout can access their driveways without obstruction. How can you consider revoking our business license because someone who has complained about the same issues for years, she does not even live in Gilmore County? Would you all consider the number of complaints filed by a single individual over the year, over the years? All y'all should know that it's hard to please everybody. With that being said, if we're receiving excess amounts of complaints from other Gilmore County residents, I would like to know about them so we can start addressing them and fixing them. I stated previously, and as you said yesterday, Charlie, that we have made many changes. I believe those changes are for the better, and that you haven't seen anything wrong at the time that you have visited the takeout. You stated that yesterday.
In the last two weeks.
Some of those changes include no coolers, paying the county a dollar per every person getting off the river, and advising nobody to get out of their tubes onto anybody's personal property, we tell everybody that every time they get on the water. We have signs, everything that you need, that you guys asked us to do, we have put it in place. Everyone who entered our establishment, who has a cooler with them, is told that they're prohibited, and they sneak it on that they are subject to a hefty fine. We tell every single person that gets on without alcohol, it's prohibited. We make them read the big sign at our put-in, every person. Cardi Care River Experience workers do not take our jobs as jokes, and we love working at the river. We also love watching everybody that comes down have a great time. I, of all people, understand that you are tired of dealing with these constant complaints, but at some point you have to hear the other side of the story. There's always two sides to each story, and I personally feel like you guys are only listening to the one side. We have been dealing with those, the harassing of that one specific lady at the takeout, she threatens and harasses us as well, she has called the cops with us and our customers, she almost hit two of our workers with her car on purpose, she screamed and cussed out families and children, she allows her mean dog to roam around the takeout, her dog has personally attacked her neighbors, her neighbor and the neighbor of her neighbor, and then my dog's first ownerly. Are you willing to let the complaints of one single person disrupt the source of income and livelihood of at least 25 workers and families of Cardi Care River Experience and L.J. River Outfitters? You're not only training the people who work at the outfitters, but also the other businesses in our county. Numerous customers leave our businesses, go explore this great town with L.J., while spending their money along the way at other family-owned businesses. With that being said, to protect our Gilmore County residents at the takeout, Cardi Care River Experience is willing to pay half the salary of a designated security guard for our takeout. We would request that you guys choose the security guard, so there's no discrepancy of bias, and I would like to conclude by giving you my full attention and appreciate y'all's time.
Okay, let me say that this is not necessarily a single person, and also it doesn't matter where the person lives, it doesn't matter if they live here or not, if they have a legitimate complaint, and if those complaints are backed up with pictures and videos, it's hard to ignore.
Are those pictures and videos public access?
Not that I'm aware of.
They're not? If they're with you guys, can we not see them?
We could probably make arrangements for it, I don't, you know, and I'd have to go back to the people that took them and see if we can get them, but here's the thing, though. You're talking about a level of cooperation here, and you've indicated here today that you're willing to do a level of cooperation.
Correct.
And I've heard that over and over during years, I just haven't seen it. Let me tell you the kind of stuff that I see. First of all, if there are 30 people standing in that no parking zone, and I get a call and it says, let's take a ridiculous example, let's say I get a call and it says, "I'm in Atlanta home," I look at my camera and I see 30 people standing out in the no parking area there. Well, you know, my first reaction is, what do you care, you're in Atlanta? But, the fact of the matter is, it's not allowed, it's against the rules, and that's not the only resident that's in place here. The level of cooperation I get, and I'm going to just get your, you've gotten personal, I am too, is when we ask that y'all maintain a record of the number of people who come through, and utilize your liability sheets that they signed to validate the number of people that come through, because we are doing a dollar per person. And at the end of the year, somebody walks in with a big box and says, "I'm not gonna do this, I don't care what y'all say, I'm not dealing with this," plops it down and says, "When y'all are done with this, give me a call and I'll come get it." No.
Would you rather us write everything down and...
I don't think I have any.
No, I'm just gonna tell all three of them that because I gave the number right back and said, "Hey, this is as close as I could get, correct? Forty-six hundred and something dollars of alcohol, correct?" I said, "This is as close as I could get," and just plop it down, said, "You tell me the number." I gave her the number, but I came up...
You came into my office, and you said, "I'm not doing this."
No, I... But are we, why are we responsible for keeping up with the amount of people when it's here, when we're paying you guys?
How can we keep up with the number of people y'all have coming through?
If we have a specific, we have a sheet, and it has 40 on each side, so every sheet that we give you has 40 people written on it, okay? Every person. If we give you, all you have to do is count the sheets, we're not gonna take time out of our day, because we're paying you guys, and I mean, I...
You're not paying us.
We're paying, we're paying the county.
You're not, that money that's paid, that dollar per person goes into a separate fund that can only be used to improve the river and the river takeout. It's to y'all's advantage, it's not for us.
And we pay it.
And you get to collect 10 cents on the dollar for collecting it and reimbursing it. Which is unheard of, by the way, usually it's like 3 cents or so.
But I just, you know, I don't understand why we're always the bad guy, well, I really don't, and I'm trying to be nice as I can, but it's tiring, and I know you're tired of it too, and we are, you said it yesterday that you have seen improvements.
In the last couple of weeks, now, I sent an email to both outfitters, and I said in that email, basically what I said the other day, that I'm tired of fighting the fight, don't plan to anymore. And I told them that, you know, I was willing to do suspension, and I actually said too, that, and I've said this before, that I would be willing, if things come down to that point, just to shut down that side, just to close that as a takeout. Now, when I said that, Woody misinterpreted, I think, what I was saying, and I think he thought I meant we would sell it, and he was ready to buy it. That's not what I meant. So, what I'm saying is since that email went out, I have seen an improvement. That is why, if you'll notice, the agenda item today was to vote on whether or not to suspend licenses. The fact that I've seen that improvement since that email went out over the last couple of weeks is why that vote is not taking place tonight. But I still want to be very clear that I expect the outfitters to abide by and enforce those rules. And my experience over the last seven and a half years has been, you know, that, okay, things will improve for a little while, and then next thing I know, I got 55 people standing out in the no parking zone. I just want to be sure that everybody understands that I'm at the end of my rope personally, and that I hope that everything goes perfectly well from this point on, I hope there are no problems, I hope that the rules are enforced and everybody has a really good time, but there's no do-overs here.
Can we not take with a grain of salt that the lady that keeps complaining, has been complaining for multiple years about the same thing? It really, it's the same, I'm not, I'm not saying it negatively, but I know who it is, and I know why she does it.
Let me ask you this.
She's vindictive of the river.
Well, let me ask you this, when you say she's been...
Me personally, I have nothing to do with it.
When you say she's vindictive of the river and she's been making, and I understand all that, and I don't doubt that that's probably true. She was here probably years ago, making some statements of her own, and when she left, we had to have some of our first responders escort her out to the car because she was being followed and felt threatened. Now, here's the thing, here's the thing, one of the, we're gonna let everybody speak, everybody can have their say, but everybody's gonna be respectful, and if you can't be respectful, there's the door right this very minute. Okay?
But I understand, but like, I mean, there's two sides.
And I'm sure, but what I'm telling you, I got from the, from the first responders.
I have video proof of her harassing us, and I would be glad to...
And that would be, and that's a legitimate complaint, but it doesn't mean that you get to do whatever you want to do, then I don't...
It's true that we get to do what we want to do. We do our very best. We have hundreds of people come down the river, and we do not control one bad apple that acts bad, when 99% of them do what they're supposed to do. You cannot blame the river for people acting like, you know, not like they're supposed to. We do everything in our power, but I say that there is a sign, big giant sign, that we make everybody read, that they know the rules, when they get out of the river, they know that they're not supposed to. There's also two big signs, like you said, we pay somebody personally to sit there and make sure that our customers do not get anywhere close to that fence or the white lines, and I would love to see video footage of our customers, Cardi Care River Experience customers, or...
I can identify them as your customers specifically.
We have light jags, they'll have labels on them, or our buses in the no parking, I would love to see those videos.
I'm not saying that it's about the buses, I'm saying about the people standing there. And here's the other thing too, that I, you know, I've fought this battle for seven and a half years, you know, I have what I see and what I think, you have what you see and what you think. What I'm saying is I'm not gonna fight the battle anymore. I don't care if you're right, I hope you are. No, seriously, I hope you're right. When I say I don't care if you're right, what I mean by that is, just make sure that everything's enforced, make sure everything looks like it has the last two weeks, there's no issue.
Yes, sir.
So if you're saying it's not your fault, if you're saying you're not doing anything, then, you know, just continue not to do anything, and we're good.
We're trying our very best to allow or to, you know, to be respectful of everybody else's property down there. You can ask anybody that lives at the takeout, any person other than that singular person, how nice it is, how clean it's been, I mean, everything. You could ask any other person other than that one single lady, how nice it has been the past two years with no coolers, no alcohol, it's like, it's like a drink. You don't have drunk people getting off, throwing stuff everywhere, it's super clean. We, I mean, I just, I don't, I don't get why you're allowing this one lady to try to ruin everything that we have worked so hard for.
If I come down to that side, and I see, you know, 50 people standing in there no parking, I'm not lying that one lady, I don't know if she even knows her there at the time. I know she's there, I've just seen her. What I'm saying is for the last couple of weeks when I've come down, it's looked okay. Keep it that way, we're good.
Yes, sir. We're doing our best.
And I'll give you guys kudos, I think the river is much cleaner this year, and I appreciate so much, I think the cooler, no cooler was a great move on the county's part, and the river part, I appreciate you guys all working for that, and the money that Mr. Parrish was talking about, it does go to pay for those signs, and we've got someone marking the river, so we'll have mileage marker signs down the river soon for, to show for public safety to be able to access people that we get out of.
What about the security guard deal? Because I would like to, I would like to do that so we can get no more, no more complaints. We are willing, Cardi Care River is willing to pay half of that.
I like the idea of that, and this is the first time we've heard that, but I like the idea of that.
To get rid of, you know, all the questions, but you guys get to choose a security guard. We want you to choose it, and we'll pay half the salary, you know, but only on weekends, we don't deal with weekdays, it's not busy enough. But that is our, you know, that's what we would like to do, just so we can have somebody else down there, not a hearsay, he said, she said.
And that is something that I will, that the three of us will discuss, we'll put it on the agenda for another meeting, and we can discuss that, and, yeah, I think that has promise.
All right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And I'd ask that maybe that be on the special call, because we're ending, we've got a busy...
Yeah, we can do that.
... Sunday night coming up, so, otherwise, we're almost done.
If you're okay with it, I'm good.
Thank you, Fred, I appreciate you, you being respectful.
Yes. One other thing I want to say is I've said my piece began today, so I'm not gonna get into a back and forth with the other folks that come up here, you know, say what you want to say, and I'm just listening, so...
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, members of board, and I respect you all very, very deeply, thank you for your service to this community. I just wanted to touch on something I just recognized a couple moments ago. Mr. Janson mentioned that he could ask any of his customers whether, you know... How do you... Oh, yes, address, not the... Sorry, my name is Jacob Exstrom. So, a couple moments ago, you spoke to Mr. Janson, or Mr. Janson spoke, and said that you could ask his customers, he can assure you that, you know, none of his customers act that way, and then you asked him, "How do you know if it's his customers?" So, I just kinda wanted to touch on that a second. Can anybody in the public use that takeout? So, what is it to say to punish a commercial entity that may be a public person, me, you, somebody in the crowd going out there and utilizing that takeout and being the problem, instead of one of his customers? He says that he addresses his customers consistently that they can only go this far, they can, you know, they can't interfere with the neighbors. Well, people of the public that are just utilizing the river don't read that sign and don't know about that rule. So, as far as enforcement goes, I believe that'd be on the county, put it on...
Well, I just made a comment, I wasn't gonna get into a back and forth, it might get difficult for me.
Sorry, Charlie. I just thought that kinda stuck out to me, just the fact of, hey, maybe it's not the commercial entities that are the problem, maybe it is the people that are utilizing other portions of the river and just getting in at the put-in and the different new launches and everything, those could potentially be the issues as well.
I would just say, consider the number to people who are private versus...
But it doesn't excuse the fact that it could be them, so, you know, numbers, you can play a numbers game all day, but it doesn't necessarily mean that you should strip their licenses based off of somebody, a bad person. Thanks, Charlie, it's your...
Hi, my name is Danielle from Field, I'm a resident of Gilmore County. I just wanted to be here, I have literally no affiliation with either river outfitters, although I am wearing an ERO shirt, it's because I love it so much, and I just love the river so much, but I'm just literally here to say, I have three small children, and we choose not to do electronics in our house, and the river is probably the biggest venture and fun that we have as residents of Gilmore County, and I just want you to consider hundreds of residents of Gilmore County children that go down that river, it's not just about people coming in from other counties, it's hard to control people from other counties and other states, how they act, so I just want you to consider all of the people that would be affected if you suspended or revoked the licenses, it has nothing to do with either party, it's just me as a mom who doesn't want to have my kids stuck at home.
Thank you, ma'am.
I live on Lebon Cogillis Drive, and since you've mentioned the other residents at the takeout on their house from the end there, I've seen over the years it's gotten much better, trash, all that, much better, they've done excellent job with that. The lady at the end of the river, we avoid, she unfortunately has some type of mental illness of some kind, I don't wanna say that about, you know, but she does, she will come... She will come and knock at our door randomly, rant and rave, just all kinds of stuff. We've seen her come down and push her way through that space that you guys painted on the road, it's approximately four feet wide, and she is in a funky spot, and when she entered her fence there with the gates that made her even more restricted to get into her driveway by putting that fence up, and with the space there, without vehicles staggered, and nobody can park on the left side for more than a labor day, and weekends there. I'm sure that's to expedite the parking for the outfitters, which they're doing really good. But I do think it should be taken into account that, I'm not complaining, I live there, so if they put words in our mouth, there's other people complaining at the takeout because we are not, I know for a fact the neighbor to us is not complaining either. I know for a fact that all five houses past me are not complaining either.
Well, when I say other people, I don't mean, I'm not limiting that to the neighbors.
Right, but we're specifically talking about the takeout in that area.
Yes.
So if there's anybody else that's complaining about that, that's actually a private road, but then he's meant to the county, according to the road department here when I spoke to the ladies, because we're trying to get our section repaved, and she said they can't because it's private. So more research, wonky road, it's before called, drive there. So, but anyway, it has been much better over there, but I do think you should consider the mental state of the woman that is making the cost of the place to you guys here at the border.
Thank you.
Max, radio. We live on the river, we are, I mean, we put people on the river, and I know that we try to do everything up the river to keep everybody in line. Once you put them on, it's kinda tough, but I want to say thank you for that, we understand it, it has been a fight, it's been, it's been a real struggle, and early stages of this, this lady would come and get on the buses and just start raving with people on the buses, so we started filming, we should quit that, you know, I mean, the same way that this evolves like in our lifetime. And it, it's crowded, on the weekends, it's crazy crowded, but the Cooper Day, you know, I didn't really much agree with that at first, because families don't like to take Cooper Day, but it's improved the trash in the river tenfold, you know? And the takeout's gonna be crowded on the weekends, and that's when everybody's here. And you never hear complaints except on the weekends, you know, this is the way it goes. So, we stay always close to our home, every local here, you know, and we want to be able to put people on there, to have them control themselves, you know, you kinda have to tell them, and then, what they do on there is up to them. We want families to enjoy, we want to have a good, clean, nice river, we do all, we tell them all that. All our girls are locals, the kids work there, that put them on, they tell everybody the same thing that says on the sign every time, they repeat it in their sleep. And I keep cheering, I keep telling, keep telling them, you know? So, and then we go clean up behind them, which, you know, that's this part of it too, we get on the river so we don't like to see trash. But you're always gonna hear complaints, it's always gonna bite it, it always has, and I've been on the river, was born and raised on the river, my kids born and raised on the river, my grandkids born and raised, right there, we live on it, people come by our place too. So, we know the strides of it, and we love the people to love the river. And the reason we're opening that whole bridge is so everybody can come get in the river. So people bring kids to get in the river, don't have nothing to swim, we just want them to get out there and enjoy the river, right? But we want to do it in a respectful way, and you can only ask them to do that, I mean, you can only ask them, you know, plead with them not to do it, and we do the best we can. But bringing the police, the sheriff's department back on the weekends really helped out, because there's somebody there kinda controlling it. Listen, we can't, you know, she will sit down there and wait till the buses get there, and you're cut back around, you know, it's, it's been a fight, it really has. I feel your struggle, because I, we've been listening to it too, people call both ways, phone started lighting up all day, I didn't know this was even going on for a lot, two o'clock, so, I want to tell you, we want you to come to our place, we want your family to enjoy it, we want your family to go by somebody else's place, and there'll be no ruckus between any of them. We are more of the liaisons, extend all of our ranch every time to everybody on the river. So, we want everybody to have a good time, we want everybody to mind their business, but we also never want to see that wonky road closed, we just don't, and we are more than willing to do whatever it takes, I mean, we work with it anyway. China runs that, I'm just speaking on her, but I have kind of, you know? Thank you for listening, though.
Thank you.
Hey, Ethan, my name is Rachel DeShields, and I'm a resident of Gilmore County. My husband and I moved here about three years ago, and the river was one of the first things we fell in love with. We lived in a little neighborhood where we could put in and, on our own, and take out on our own, and that was awesome, except we quickly learned we could not take anybody else down with us, because we went on a portion of the river that was not manned by the outfitters, so it wasn't clean, there were all kind of trees and limbs down, our tubes were always popping, when we took friends down, they would get stuck up underneath the tree, and my husband would have to pull them out. So we started using the outfitters, and they've been, kinda become family to us, whether they know it or not, we take our friends, we take our family. But I think the biggest thing that they provide to us, you guys allowing them to function and have their business here, is they keep our rivers clean, and they keep them safe. And if you take their licenses away, my fear is, the river's not gonna be safe anymore, it's not necessarily gonna be clean, people are still gonna be trying to go down it, but it's gonna turn into a safety issue. And so, I just would really advocate, you know, people come out, and as everybody said tonight, you can't really control people's behaviors. I work in hospital, we deal, we deal with that all the time, but my ask is that you continue fighting, you fight for your residents, you fight for your kids and families and our visitors, because it's worth it. We all have this beautiful thing here that we get to share, and I think it's worth, it's worth the challenge, it's worth the fight, so I just ask that you continue in that.
Thank you. Okay. If there's nobody else, we will continue on with the meeting. And thank you all for coming. I believe there's never gonna be a vote tonight. After, in our discussion yesterday, in the work session, you know, what we decided was that in the last couple of weeks, things seem to improve, and we were very hopeful that they would stay that way, but the point that I was making yesterday was simply that the rules have to be followed, or there will be a vote. But, no, there's, there's no vote tonight, it wasn't their intention to do that, it's not our intention or our desire to shut any of this thing. It just can't be a continuous battle that we're living in.
At the end of the day, you're an elected official, and it is your job to fight the fight for the citizens of the county, not for someone-
And it's Charlie's job to follow the rules, so that we don't have to fight.
No, it's your job to fight for the public, you're an elected public official.
Okay, so you're saying that I need to continue to fight, Charlie?
No, you need to continue to fight for us, because the community wants it here, and that's your job as an elected official, Charlie.
But the fight, I'm on my way with y'all, and you're saying you want me to continue it?
No, that's not what I said.
In any event, we're very hopeful that things are gonna go smoothly, none of us have any desire to put any stop to this, and we recognize the benefit to the families and to Gilmore County. I'm still done fighting, so, hopefully the, the last couple of weeks will be an indication of what's to come, and I think the idea of, of funding or partially funding a full-time person out there is a big step in our right direction. So, I'm a big fan of solutions and not confrontation, so I think we are on our way to that. Feel pretty good about it. I just, I just don't wanna put myself in a vulnerable position of, okay, now we're gonna start over from day one, and then we start to fight over again, so, you know, I'm just saying, it's good now, keep it that way, and we're all good, so. And remember that if somebody's breaking the rules, and it's, to use some of the other folks' words, a crazy old lady that's reporting, doesn't mean they're still not breaking the rules. Anyway. No, we're not voting tonight. Okay. Anything else on, on that subject before we go?
Actually, if I might, sorry, I'll slide up. I'm like the other young lady, I have no affiliation, I, I do the last lot, I'm on the group, but I also live on the river, and I-
Will you state your name?
Yes, my name is Matt Bond, I live on the Cardade, I too have seen people get trapped. I don't want to repeat all of those things. I guess I do feel your frustration, I really truly do. But I think what, more than anything, I fear is asking the outfitters to be enforcement. That, that's a little scary. If they have to become the peace officer, the one who enforces these rules, from the idea that, I don't want anyone living in my establishment carrying a beard, I can't tackle them down the stairs, I call 911. I look to those who have the authority to address it. If everyone is truly telling everyone when they get on the river, addressing what the rules are, doing the best they can to enforce it, and you have those outliers, then I love the idea that Trevor's presented of a security guard or someone with the authority to help implement a following of these rules, your fight is not alone, more than anything. Someone, I did, I bought my first place over on Turkey Creek, and it wasn't big enough for my big butt, so I bought on the Cardade, and I love it, and I get off, I don't know where Max is, but if it wasn't for Max, I couldn't get down the river half the time, because he spends a great deal of time even going up above the commercial lanes and clearing logs that are incredibly dangerous. People get sucked underneath those logs, I had a friend who did the same in a kayak, and it's terrifying in those moments that you're trapped. The benefits have to be considered also with that of the risk. I get the concern of the public that's downriver at the outtake, but I just caution it being asked for the outfitters to be the enforcer, that's, that's asking a lot. They can tell, they can educate, they can provide the signs and the information about what the rules are, but to ask the outfitters to be the enforcer, I really say that with, I think we should use caution about that.
And I agree with you 100% completely on that. I do believe, though, that the outfits should be, that the outfitters should be responsible for paying the cost of the enforcer, because that's, they're using a county facility at no cost in order to make money. If that presents a problem, then I believe the outfitters should be responsible for the, for paying for the solution.
And that's a fair opinion, I'm not saying I agree or disagree, I do not. What I'm saying, what I like more than anything, seeing where this is, what I'm fearful of, Commissioner Parrish, is you're not alone. I know you, it sounds like you feel like you have been fighting this fight for seven and a half years by yourself. The other individuals that live here in the community that get to enjoy the river, I have friends that come up all the time, I have the pleasure of jumping in my back door and getting out from the whole bridge road, because I live upstream, but I couldn't do it with all of the, without the outfitters. I use Cardade River Experience, or Cardade, you get out a lot of times, and I do everything I can to help better what they do also for the community. So I guess what I just want to say is, you are not alone, there are those of us that want to fight with you to make this the right thing, we want the enforcement to be done appropriately, so that no one finds himself in a precarious position. But I, my business, as well as so many others, benefit for those people that choose Gilmore County to come and float down the river. Part of what I did with the roof was the idea of getting people to stop treating L.J. as a gas stop on the way to Blue Ridge, and I believe our outfitters are growing every day. We can find a solution that we all can agree upon. So I look forward to seeing where this goes, this is my very first meeting, because I'm usually out of town for my full-time job, but I do appreciate y'all's time, I appreciate what y'all do, so I look forward to seeing where this discussion goes.
It was very positive comment, thank you.
Thank you.
And, and I'd just like to clarify also that in our last changes that we made with this, the county did state that we would have a deputy on site on the weekends, and unfortunately, due to lack of, shortage of deputies, they, we have not been able to fulfill that promise that we made. And we did make that promise, that was part of the ordinance that we changed. So I feel personally somewhat responsible that there has not been a deputy there. I understand shortage, that's not my place to contact sheriff or whoever, so I appreciate you willing, being willing to pay for a private security guard. I think if someone is there in a uniform, it clears up a lot, I agree, it's hard for you guys to discipline folks, however, there's a, there's a kind way to say with your driver or whoever you're paying to stay on site, hey, guys, we want to stay back here, away from this area right here, this is these residents, people are gonna understand, residents live right here, so we can't block their entrance. Just say it like that, it's, it's easy, just move along, and I'm sure you do, and I'm sure there are people that don't, and it gets crazy on the weekends, I understand. But I appreciate, I do think y'all have come a long way, but if anyone's able to videotape or take pictures at any time where they're inside that little line, then somebody's breaking the rules. So, if that doesn't happen, there's no way that anybody can videotape or take pictures, so.
How, I, I do want to, but how is it breaking the rules if it says no parking? It doesn't say no ordering, no nothing.
I think it says no, the sign says don't-
The signs just say, behind this sign. If you're in front of that sign, you're breaking the rules, whether you're in the no parking or not.
Even our workers?
No, we're not getting ridiculous about this.
It's, it's just keeping those people out of that.
What the sign says is, please stay behind this sign while you're waiting for, you know?
They're not in the, the strike zone, are we not breaking the rules?
If they're in front of that sign, and they're not there as part of your business, yes, they're breaking the rules. Correct.
Can, can we not have the sign on the other side too, that they go off the river?
We have signs on both sides.
Is it on both sides though?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm just nervous that she's gonna keep using these pictures and videos.
I'm sorry.
I'm just nervous she's gonna keep reusing the videos, or gonna keep getting-
This is not helping out everyone with respect to the friends, if, if they want-
Okay, I don't think that there'll be a concern going forward, but, yes, go ahead.
My name is Jessica, Cusick Hackett, I appreciate your time. Wasn't gonna speak, but I have lots of opinions about this, I'm pro-river, pro-mature, and also safety. I approached you tonight because of the comment that was just made a few moments ago about having a deputy at the tishow. I really do not feel comfortable with the idea of having an armed person, if they would be armed, at the takeout, where tourists and children are coming, if you want to have a security person or a official in a uniform or something, but I don't think you need to have deputies. Does this seem like a police issue, like a lot of, things don't seem like a police issue? I'm, I'm not saying safety is not important, I think there's, I understand what you're saying. And also, do you consider are there other businesses that have had their, their business being taken because of complaints? Or is it just the river? So I'd like to consider that, I'm sure a lot of complaints are about Walmart and their noise, but I've never seen their business like this, right? But, but again, the concern I have is that you're talking about putting a deputy at a recreational takeout, where there's water, and there's children, and there's private residences, and I wouldn't want an armed officer near my driveway.
All due respect, I think children should be taught that deputies are their friends. I think they should be taught that this is who you go to, well, but you, but you've made your comment, let me make mine. I think that they should be taught that these are people you go to when you need help, and I will never, ever ask one of our deputies to take- And I will never, ever ask one of our deputies to take off his firearm, no matter where he is, because with the environment we have today, they're always at risk.
I do not feel that the armed person is the solution to every problem, and I would not want to participate in the river where a deputy at the end of it. In respect, someone with authority is one thing, but the threat of having a weapon where it's not needed, and also citizens, I don't think are taking their locks down the river with them, are they?
I don't know they have the right to if they want to.
Okay, well, I would get off the river because that would intimidate me. I'm just speaking for myself.
And that's your choice. And, and we don't have to agree on this.
I've been calling him late about that I've been threatened by this family.
Second Amendment.
Right, but it's a business and...
Second Amendment.
I understand the second amendment thing.
Now, the business has the right to say no guns, but, but she needs to talk to us, and I'm sure...
That, it worries me about that situation escalating to that. If you have a normal security guard there, they can handle the situation or, or someone observing. What is the officer supposed to do that the, the normal hired person is not going to do?
I don't envision that the officer will ever have to use their weapon there, but to, but I think that seeing an officer with a weapon should be normal. And I think children should not be afraid of that, and I think children should be taught not to be afraid of it.
I disagree with the idea that...
And that's fine, we can disagree. And we can disagree, but that's, and that's a choice you make. But I'm never going to ask an officer to stay there without his weapon.
Again, I really won't ask an officer to not have a firearm. I understand that. I have family members that have been police officers. What I'm saying is, do you really need to have an armed person to enforce, hey, don't stand there, hey, don't park there, hey, don't litter? I can do that without a gun. I have my run of guns, I do security, I do crowd control, I have a large background in these things, so I'm not going to stay all the time. I'm here to say, when you put an officer there, you're escalating the situation.
I disagree.
It's not necessary to have, you want to regulate people's behavior, it's fine, but I, I don't think you, do you post an officer at every parking lot everywhere? I mean, it's just, this is the river. But then you again...
Thank you, ma'am.
Sorry, I don't mean, make one of us.
I just want to add my two cents on all perspective.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. My husband and I, and I realize this is not part of your deal. This belongs to the GBA or whoever, Army Corps of Engineers or whoever. But Ridgeway Boat Ranch, we can't use it on weekends. There's too many people here now. And they have an area blocked off for people with trucks and, and, and boat trailers several back, and then they have the individual parking. Well, the individuals come in and they start, there would be plenty of parking still left for the individuals, and they're parking where the boats and the trailers are supposed to go. So where are we supposed to park? So we can't use, we can't use the lake anymore on the, on the, on the weekends because there's too many, too many fleas on this dock back.
As an avid fisherman...
But how are you going to govern that? How you...
Yeah.
You know, there's nothing to do with these guys. But I'm just saying, it's hard to get people to understand signs and everything and, and do like they're supposed to do. And by the way, if you've got, if you've got a sheriff, if you've got a deputy out there and he's standing behind, and he's got a badge on, he needs, he needs a weapon.
Thank you, ma'am. But you're right, this is a Corps of Engineers, and we don't have anything to say.
I know, I know, but I'm just saying it's hard to get people to do what they're supposed to do.
I understand.
Especially when you get overrun.
And, and I like to go fishing with my boat, and I, so I, I feel your pain.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Sharon Foster, I'm one of the drivers for CRX. I just wanted to reiterate what Matt had said about us being enforcers. I don't, I know it's their company, and we should do what we need to do to follow the rules, and we try. As one of the bus drivers, in my speech for every trip that I take, I tell everybody, once you get on the river, you're on for the ride. It is private property on both sides. You cannot get out of the river. That, you know, you have to go to the end. And, I mean, that's as, that's as much as we can do. And I agree with having a, a guard or an officer at the end. I agree with that. And, you know, we tell everybody, y'all have got to stay behind these lines. But we've got people, like I say, coming from Hampton Beach, and there's, and I only work weekends. I only work Saturday and Sunday. And, you know, I've seen that lady one time in two years, you know, down there. I've never met her, you know? And I, but when I started working for them, that was the first thing they told me. They said, do not park near her fields. Do not get in her way.
You know, we have a white, low man that works for the county, and he said something to me a while back that I liked a lot, and told him I was going to use it at some point. So let me say that I agree with the idea of enforcement out there. I think that's probably going to end up being the ultimate solution to all of this. So what I would tell y'all on that is, let me make sure I've got this right. You've sold it, and I don't buy it back.
Right. Exactly. Well, the, I would say law enforcement would make a bigger difference than just a security guard.
I think it's got to be law enforcement because whoever's there is going to have to have the arrest authority because you get some drunk that wants to fight him or whatever.
And we, and, you know, we have officers that go through our parking lot, that constantly monitor stuff, and it keeps a lot of that down. And we've tried to control the Coopers. Every time we get on my bus, I go and I, I get somebody and I'm like, hey, uh-uh, they can't do this. And I've had people, a couple of weekends ago, that got on there with boxes of stuff, and I'm like, no, uh-uh, you know, this is not allowed. We do our part as employees to try to control this.
As much as I like the, the quote that I heard and just gave you, I like my quote better. Don't be that person that can't take yes for an answer.
Exactly. I understand that, I understand that. But when I say there should be an officer down there at the post of security guard, BlackBerry, security guard, and half the time, they don't listen to him.
You're right.
I mean, I don't know who pays his salary. Maybe it's the community.
I do, because my community pays half of it.
Oh, really? Okay. But they, I mean, he's constantly yelling at those people, and, and half the time, they don't. But I can guarantee you, every time I go down that road with a group of people, I tell them, do not get out of that river. And I've had people complain that, you know, there's trees down, like some of the others have said that there are bee hives out there. And I call Liddy, or I call Trent, and I say, look, there's a problem on the river. And they go down with their kayaks, and they cut the trees out, they take care of, you know, what's going on on the river, and they keep it clean. And we, we do our part. I mean, we try. I'll say, we try to do our part, so.
Well, there, there has to be an officer, I think, and he will have a gun.
Yeah, absolutely. Look, I got to carry a car bit. If I could carry my gun everywhere, I would, too. I mean, I, I agree. I agree. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else? If not, we're going to try to get this, rest of this through pretty quickly here. Okay. Appointment of a member to the Gilmer County Building Authority. I make a motion to adjourn the plenary to be appointed for another term. All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion and possible action on payroll timekeeping system. We heard all the particulars yesterday. I'm going to make a motion that it be approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion and possible action of additional part-time employee at the park. I am going to make a motion for a budget amendment to move the salaries for that person from a airport to parking wreck that was transferred over there.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion and possible action of an agreement with Gilmer County Chamber of Commerce. I think we're all on board on that, so I'm going to make a motion that that be approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion and possible action of two appointments to the Ethics Board. I am going to make a motion that Lex Rainey and Diane Scoggins be appointed to the Ethics Board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to make a motion that we table discussion and possible action on suspending the river.
I haven't had enough say yet.
Okay, go. All right. Motion to table that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion and possible action of Parking Rake Advisory Board. We, I think probably we need to table that one as well because we want to...
Correct.
...take a look at requirements and all, so all in favor?
Aye.
Discussion and possible action of an ordinance to address stormwater runoff. I think at this point, we just need to be aware that we need to start looking at that and working on it. I don't see any vote that we need to take on that. We had the discussion. Does anybody need an executive session? Yeah, okay. Motion for a short executive session with no action anticipated.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, folks, that's it. Thank you.